There you go.
There you go.
This is the call meeting to order. Um, this will be a regular city council meeting at City Hall Monday, January thirteenth. And, um, we are going to start with swearing in the.
Do you all have your sheet in front of you? Read it out so I'll read it out and repeat after me. So say, raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Anderson.
To you, George.
Do solemnly swear, support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And discharge states in the duty of the office of.
And discharge states in the duties of the office of. Mayor.
The city of Osakers, Minnesota.
The city of Osakers, Minnesota.
The best of my judgment and abilities.
So help me God. The best of my judgment and abilities. So help me God.
If you were to sign then or sign mine, whatever one you want, but I can put it in the file.
If we could all scan and state the place of residence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anything anybody wants to change on the agenda?
I just have a change on. I want to make a motion to approve the.
Second.
Motion has been, um. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, anything on the consent agenda?
Um, if you could pull out item number seventy-six, we did have a reminder that we wanted to visit a black man. He was.
I don't know. I got it my way. I need to be held from home, so I just want to be here for square and out. So I'll have it for this one.
Any other changes?
Motion to approve the agenda with change.
Second.
Motion is being made and seconded to approve consent agenda. On to the council minutes.
Covers the consent agenda, correct?
Yep.
So do we.
Is organizational items under, is the consent agenda?
Um, no. Okay. Is there anything anyone wanted to discuss about four fifty-one?
No. Um, the founder's are okay with the council meetings being the same time and place, like on Monday, so again, I just didn't have a calendar in there, just to note that Congress stays the same day and we're not required to withhold from having a meeting on that day, so you can hold the meeting.
So we don't have to change anything for the year.
Yep.
Would you like to make a motion to accept the schedule for twenty twenty-five?
I will make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion is being made and seconded to accept the schedule for twenty twenty-five council meetings to be held at Osakers City Hall, seven P M. on the second Monday of every month. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Um, I have put together, um, my thoughts on mayor appointments. We've all had a chance to look it over. Um, the only open position is the industrial run for the E D A. Uh, two people have shown interest in that. I'd like to hold off on appointing that person until after the E D A meeting.
Should we just table this on?
And that would be fine with me as much as you pay with it.
Yeah.
I have a motion to table, um, the mayor appointments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
License renewals. Um, the renewals for the license have been provided through all of us. It looks like all information has been received with the exception of Bowling Barn. Um, and you still haven't received that, Antoine?
No.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve licenses for twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our newspaper that we will be dealing, our official newspaper we'll be dealing with, currently we are using the Long Prairie Leader. Um, they have submitted. A bid letter, this is the only bid letter we have received.
Y'all allowing my last week?
Do you want?
If you have questions.
You'd like me to read this letter alone. Please consider this letter, the Long Prairie Leader Official Bid to the City of Osakers for the Designation of Official Newspaper for the Year Twenty Twenty-Five. The Long Prairie Leader, a qualified legal newspaper, respectfully submits a bid of eight dollars and fifty cents per column inch for the publication of minutes, notices, and other official communications required under Minnesota Statute three three one A. This represents a one dollar per inch increase in cost over twenty twenty-three. This is also the first rate increase proposed. The Long Prairie Leader fully meets the statutory requirements for designation by the City of Osakers under Minnesota Statute three three one eight point zero two subdivision one. Performance, the Long Prairie Leader, a weekly newspaper, shall publish all required documents or notices submitted to the City of Osakers in its next available issue or within the agreed timeframe. The Long Prairie Leader has a submission deadline of Mondays at noon for inclusion in that same week's newspaper. Notified, notarized affidavits of publication will be provided after publication. Additionally, the Long Prairie Leader will publish said notices, proceedings, et cetera, in the next available issue of the Osakers Anchor Newspaper free of charge. Format, the Long Prairie Leader will publish all notices, proceedings, et cetera, under the following format. Oh, my gosh. Font, font size, and, and leading, and I'm not going to try and pronounce the font.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to, uh, F. Long Prairie Leader as our official newspaper, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Do you have a second on that?
Yes. Next item is, um. The, um, Electronic Funds Transfer Form Resolution and Twenty Twenty-four Budget. So let's start with the electronic funds transfer. And looking at authorizing Angela Jacobson to continue in that role.
I'll make the motion to approve Angela Jacobson to be the designated business administrator.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded to approve Angela Jacobson to approve electronic funds transfers for twenty twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero-two, resolution naming depositories and financial institutions for city funds, whereas the City of Osakers required to designate depositories and financial institutions for city funds. Therefore, now be it resolved, the City of Osakers hereby designates the following as depositories and financial institutions for the city funds. First National Bank of Osakers and four M. funds for all authorized suitable investments covered under Minnesota Statute Chapter one eighteen A and the city's investment policy.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero-two.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-five zero-two to approve official depositories. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Clerk Jacobson has made a request to attend the clerk's conference in March. I was in Brooklyn Center this year, on March eighteenth through the twenty-first. The cost to attend the conference is four hundred and ninety-five dollars. The budget does cover the cost to attend the conference.
So.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for Clerk Jacobson to attend the conference in Brooklyn Center. All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four budget. Then we have the liquor store reports. Anybody have any questions on that?
So was there, so I know we did inventory, was there? I think the council saw the report.
Yes.
So was there any guidance on that?
So it's, um, you know, we did put a synopsis of the totals of when we come into the differences um, that we found. Currently, um, there are some things that Troy's working on to see where kind of these issues are coming from, why, why the inventory was off. Um, our auditor also gives some guidance on maybe some psychokalks will have to be done periodically. Uh, the last time we had inventory that was off, I bet that's what they suggested is doing psychokalks to try to mitigate what's having issue and why it's off. So I'm sure those will be the suggestions.
So what can I ask, hopefully you as all being on the committee, um, working with the liquor store, do you guys have kind of some small goals for them, six months, twelve months, anything like that that you guys are kind of working on and hoping to help with?
Um, I'm actually not on the table anymore.
I mean, were you guys.
Well, beforehand, that's more what I was going for.
Uh, well, we had talked to Troy about, um, the overcores. We talked to him about, um, there's a big inventory issue. We had talked to him about some discrepancies in the pull pad funds. And I think we just need some more guidance as how that needs to be dealt with. Um, just from a higher standpoint than just the council. And, um, he, I believe, wants to have a team meeting. He's been doing a ton of cleaning. The inventory was just, it's a process. I had never helped with that before. Um, he didn't, Troy didn't really think the process was, I think he has some ideas of ways to improve that. So I think he just needs to meet with all the employees and just get a handle on everything. He kind of got thrown in with a lot to take care of and a lot, just a lot to deal with. And then being short-staffed, so.
It's his field should be.
I think it's still.
Jeff, does that part-time?
Or, yeah, half.
You know, work half days or whatever. Yeah, so today, I talked to him today to see if he had anything he wanted to bring up tonight, but, he didn't really have anything. He said he wanted to hire or put an ad out for more part-time work. Just do whatever you want, Facebook, newspaper, radio ads, post it in the bar somewhere.
And Julie, so you know, we were going to meet with him at least monthly.
Yes.
More, just as he's getting into the role and kind of some guidance there, so, you know, we didn't approve mayor appointments tonight, so I don't know what you, how you want to handle that?
I'll work with these two for right now and we'll, um, we'll kind of talk a little bit about.
Still have a committee and then, I mean, we would still leave the liaisons as is, but just still have a committee. Well, then.
Well, it can't be three conferences. You have to be two of you.
Yep.
So.
Yes, I mean.
Unless you want to keep with them for this month, then if you're going to do it next month, just want to be clear.
Yep.
Okay. Because I think we're kind of going to meet after you got back here, turns out in the month, so.
Yep, and that's fine.
Well, maybe if we do that and then next month we'll kind of report what it says and then you can kind of take it from, does that sound okay?
That sounds absolutely perfect.
Okay. Don't think there's anything to improve on that.
We did say he's going to start running some specials too. Um, off sale and on sale.
Um, I know, um, it was mentioned at one point too about putting some type of, um, like air fryer or whatever. Has any conversation been had about putting in anything more than the pizzas?
You know, we talked about it as a council probably last spring, but with him just really getting his feet wet, I don't think it's really been mentioned yet.
Yep. He wants to, that was one of his big things he wanted to do, but we just got a lot of gifts.
Oh, yeah.
He was on the.
Maybe towards spring.
Yeah.
And can I ask, do you guys know, so I saw a sign or a post on Facebook that it was closed at nine last Friday. Do you guys know why?
No.
I am short-staffed, I think somebody called in.
Oh, that's too bad.
They've been there all day, so, and, and actually Troy was on the columnist weekend. He had a trip that they planned before he was even hired, but he was not here.
That's too bad. No, I just happened to see it and I'm like, oh.
And they don't have a Facebook right now because it was deleted, so we're working on trying to get that.
That would be very nice.
That was why somebody else posted it.
That would be very nice. Beautiful, thank you, guys.
First responders.
I'll make a motion to approve the first responders officers for twenty twenty-five.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the, uh, first responder officers for twenty twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, the ordinance administrator citation.
Oh, the.
Oh. Oh, for great sake, you kind of got stuck here, sorry.
It's all right. So you've got a copy of our report for the calls for the month of December. We had four calls, um, brush fire, semi-fire, house fire, and then one alarm. Our total for twenty twenty-four was fifty-nine calls for the year. So, um, back on December sixteenth, we had our election officers for the twenty twenty-five year. Myself selected as fire chief, Travis Mindorf as first assistant, Kyle Kostreski as second assistant, training officer as Alan Stoll, secretary Craig Schultz, treasurer Bob Callstrom. Our relief president was still the same with Kyle Kostreski. Matt Crawl will be relief vice president. And board members for the relief are Adam Tristwell and Chad Zimmel. Questions on any of that? I didn't grab my sheet, I think we used like a hundred and twenty-three or a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of water left here between calls, trainings, all that, so. And I was submitted to run that for audit, so.
Motion to approve the fire department's officers.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve prior to carbon officers and relief association board members for twenty twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are up there every Monday night, whether it's training, work night, meetings, you're welcome to stop up whenever, so.
What time is that?
Seven o'clock, so.
And then the township meeting is only next.
Township is February nineteenth.
Yep.
We'll be township at seven o'clock, so.
I'm going to ask the hard question, what's the pancake on you? That's in spring, isn't it?
Give me two seconds.
I was going to say it normally was right around May sometime.
So excited.
May fourth.
Beautiful.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Which really doesn't have any one thing. They, uh, we went through and hashed it for last month, so go through it out with everything. Um, and it's such one person who was just a citation. And we didn't even do an administrator, then we did a city one, just because the person wasn't going to respond to the administrative one, because the letter could come back, so. Um, and in March probably, um, beginning in April, we'll deal with the planning zone consultant and go through town again, check out the list that we currently have and see the progress and hopefully we can remove a bunch of them. And if we need to add new ones, add them on there and then get letters out, uh, sometime in April, at least a month before cleanup day, so. If there's anyone that needs to clean up their yard, they can get their letter from us about a month ahead of time.
We started doing the commercial, so I guess we'll have to do that problem.
Yeah, we would, the, we did the commercial once, so this spring we'll do, we'll do everything, residential, commercial, all of them.
Great.
We've knocked a lot of them off of there, so there won't be as many, so we can come by them. Ben, one of them here, you want to, uh, maybe else question?
Yeah, it was just brought up last month and we just asked to have it put on the agenda, just, I think it was more of a conversation just so that if something were to happen or, I mean, it, it was hypothetical, worst case scenarios, but on the same sense, it was, I think, brought up that that really puts the city in a liability issue if we don't know where our officers are. I think kind of that's where some of that conversation was coming from and just needed to get some talks from you on that as to why if we don't have them, one everybody does, from what I understand it.
Yeah, it was, uh, basically a technical issue. It was last year when it quit working. It wasn't eight years from what I heard to say that it was last year they quit working. The license has expired on two of the cars. And then in the middle of last year, we ended up last year, the other license expired. And when I had I T. look at it, they said, well, it just, it looks like the license issue. Called the company that handles the welders that does all the G P S. stuff in the cars and they said, well, yeah, they just, your license expired. We sent out a notice to renew it and didn't get renewed. Well, the email address, they had it wrong. So I got that fixed. Mine is working now and by the end of the week, uh, the other two, they just got to run over to I T. Now that they're activated and they'll get them fixed, then all three cars should be working by the end of the week. Um, wait for this meeting? For later?
Yes.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Any questions on, uh, that? No, I'm here for numbers, so. Thanks.
The water plant, water tower, pay application, number thirteen, E. construction. Is working on redoing the water tower. They have worked as far as they can on the project and they're waiting for some U S. A. made pumps to finish. They will continue to work on what they can until they get them. They have a pay application amount of seventy-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll make a motion to pay construction seventy-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve pay application thirteen for E. construction in the amount of seventy-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Sandy is going to update us on Pike Street.
There's a.
Got that pretty already, really got front.
Um. You got one last thing.
Thank you all for having me tonight. Congratulations to the two new counselors. I think this is the first time, I think I've met you already, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Tonight we've got a couple of updates, so, uh, the Pike Street project, uh, in the industrial park, um, council, back in twenty twenty-four, they authorized us to move forward with a thirty percent design on Pike Street to pave the portion, uh, the gravel portion, um, from the highway in about twelve hundred feet. Uh, we have a, the grant application prepared. We're waiting for the county assessor's office to give us a estimated value of the land if the whole industrial park was built out. That's part of the grant application through deed is that we have to show what an estimated value of both the property from the industrial park would be for the lots that are vacant. Right now, um, part of the deed grant is, um, showing the creation of jobs and the build of the industrial park and trying to give them an estimate of, um, if their investment is used to pave Pike Street, what is the return on their investment, um, as far as more jobs and more business in the city. So that's what we're kind of waiting on right now, um, to submit that grant application. And then once that, um, we have the resolution from the council, I think a couple of months ago we got that, so we should be able to submit it as soon as, uh, we get that done, so. Now, I guess the, uh, next item on the agenda is something I think you probably were all sent, um, by Angela here. Uh, we finished this report, um, prior to the new year. Um, uh, you guys hired us to do a couple of three thousand dollar high-level concept reports. One was for the A. for parcel, which is a raw piece of land, um, over on the north-west part of town. This other one, um, that is more in the council jurisdiction, one we presented for the E. D. A. last month. Uh, this one is, um, a road project that is, um, on Eighth Avenue East and Labyrinth Drive. So, um, what these concept reports, um, kind of do is really give you guys a high-level view of what the project cost could potentially be, what the expenses or the costs are to extend sewer and water, if that is something the council wants to consider down that roadway, um, and giving you kind of a high-level understanding of environmental, uh, permits and things you would need, um, to construct that roadway. Um, gives us a chance to look at ASB. plans, where is your water and sewer right now? How far will we have to extend it to get it down there? Is it financially feasible? I think that's the question that everyone has. Um, so we, we took a deep dive, um, into your city code, uh, local improvement policy. So we, we took a deep dive into your city code, local improvement policy, your assessment policy, and kind of gave this report that kind of outlines what the existing conditions are. I don't know how far you want me to get into this, but it kind of goes through existing conditions, what the proposed conditions are, a few of the options we looked at for sewer and water extensions. Um and the street's typical section, how that would look. And just kind of give you some general assumptions about, you know, what we use for your street typical section. So I mean, I can get into maybe not the existing conditions, but the proposed side, so you guys understand the few things that we looked at to give you guys some options that may be available to you. Uh existing conditions, just high level, it's a dirt road right now, our gravel road, no public utilities, everyone is on well, mound type systems in that area. Um and so we went into, uh we got ASB drawings from Public Works and looked at where sewer and water is the closest and where it's located. We found that it's by the Osakis Country Club on the uh east side of twenty-seven, north side of the trail. Um and so that is the most feasible and logical connection point to go down Eighth and Laggins. But there's a lot that has to be done to get it there. And so, um by all accounts, when you're going under a state trail and a, and a highway, they're gonna make you case it in a steel casing. And that's all accounted for in here, so your sewer and water would have to be cased under both of those. Uh we tried to account for all of that. We did look at extension of gravity sewer down. We can make it a long ways, but we run out of very depth once we get down to the southern end of the development. And so our most feasible alternative or the most cost effective, and I don't know if you guys have systems like this in the city, but a two inch or a three inch force main that runs the length of both Eighth and Laggins would probably be the most feasible and cost effective. We made the assumption that you guys had a pretty poor soils down there, likely your high groundwater. The opportunity that directional drill, um force main down the length of those projects and then having residents install individual grinder stations that basically act as the pumping mechanism to pump it all the way to the nearest manhole, which is at the country club. And so all of these systems would act as their own lift station. We, we did make the assumption, based on some of the age of the homes and things, that a lot of these mound systems and things down there might be getting close to the point of needing replacement. We don't know that for sure, I don't know, uh some of the homes are newer down there, some of them look the early two thousands vintage, maybe the nineties. And so we just kind of made the distinction that, hey, some of these mound systems are probably gonna need to be replaced soon. Is now the time for the city to install a force main to be able for them to switch over with a grinder, um pumping station to connect into a force main some point in future. The gravity system was kind of at a high level, we decided not to pursue that because with any type of gravity main, you can direction drill, it's very difficult. But there's a lot of open cutting that needs to occur, so with any open cutting like that, we're gonna have the watering, you're gonna have potential, a lot of risk, right? You're digging in a sewer, a sewer main. And so really, we feel that the trenchless type of methods of construction are gonna be your most cost effective, which are your force mains and your usable water main. So I kind of went into on page nine, got into the three different options we looked at for sewer. One was had a major lift found at the end of, um, where the most feasible location for that would be, but municipal stations, you know, you're looking at eight hundred thousand to a million dollars in expense just for the lift, plus the force main to get it to where it needs to go. That option one is what I was describing with the low pressure force main, the two or three inch force main that collects all the homes. And then each resident has their own individual pumping station that pumps it to the manhole. And then a combination gravity and low pressure, that was discarded because of the open cutting that we would have in a gravity installation. Uh water main, that's pretty self-explanatory, uh we just said trenchless is gonna be your best way of trenchless technology, usable PVC, probably a six or eighty pipe. The costs are included in the cost. Uh storm sewer, uh this project's a little different from the fact, and we have a map up here, but the portion of Eighth Avenue East that runs north and south is pretty rural in character. We wouldn't propose any curb and gutter or anything along that because there's already ditching, there's likely centerline culverts, driveway culverts. And so changing that into a municipal type section with curb and gutter and storm sewer really wouldn't make a lot of sense. So what we decided to at least propose in here is that the first section down Eighth would be like a rural section. And then once you get into the actual development, that would be more of your curb and gutter, your standard municipal roadway that you see in town here. Um we get into a little bit of what we considered like a standard street typical section. We pulled a typical section from Bosage Street from the two thousand eighty seven improvement project that will all park in on both sides. And two drive, driving lanes in that Laggins area. Uh getting into a little bit of the permitting, um these are all of your pretty standard permits. You know, some of these from the Department of Natural Resources, water appropriation permit, that's for construction to watering during construction. DNR public waters, if we're filling at our below ordinary high water level on a DNR named lake, um that would be a route we need to go down. Of course, there's the wetland side of things, we would do a full wetland delineation before we design any project to delineate the boundaries of the, of the features or the wetlands near the project. And if we're filling any of those, we'd have to go through the Wetland Conservation Act and ensure we have credits for that. There is quite a bit of stuff in here about MEAC, the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council, and archaeological reports, being that you're next to Lake Osakis and Stevens Lake. There's a pretty, pretty high likelihood that there might be archaeological artifacts that you run into in any type of project, especially when you can see water, that's a good indication of that. So we typically recommend that you lead to a Phase One A literature review and research and submit that report. That's usually done by a subconsultant to us, um that we have, we've worked with quite often. Uh Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, anytime you disturb over an acre, you're required to have a stormwater permit during construction. A sanitary sewer extension approval, um section four oh one water quality certification, that is just required if wetland impacts occur. From a local perspective, Douglas County State Water Conservation District, they act as your LGU or local government unit for the Wetland Conservation Act. So they would be the approvals that you would need for, we'll be doing delineation and also submit a replacement plan if we are impacting wetlands. City of Osakis has a shoreline ordinance. And then on the federal side, yours are Army Corps of Engineers, um they have a section that they are, if you're impacting a jurisdictional water body that they consider themselves as ownership over, um they would be a part of that wetland process. Getting into the costs, um that is on page fifteen. I broke this down into three separate kind of buckets, uh one being roadway and storm sewer, those kind of all flow together. Your drainage and your roadway are all kind of one system. We did include a twenty percent contingency and an indirect cost of fifteen percent, which is your engineering, your legal, your admin, your assessment proceedings, that kind of stuff. Our total construction cost estimate is for roadway and storm sewer is a little over one point eight million for those two projects. The sanitary sewer, this is assuming the two or three inch diameter sanitary sewer force main. Uh this is just the public side, so we would extend the main and extend the service to the right away edge. And then the property owners would be responsible to install their infrastructure on their side, demo their mound system and connect it to the city sewer. With just the public side, a little under eight hundred and ten thousand, and that's the same twenty percent contingency and indirect cost of fifteen percent. Then the water main total, a little over one point zero five million, that's for a six inch usable PVC installed directional drill. Running a curb stop belt to the right away line, so that when the property owner removes their well, seals it, and run a new service, they can connect into the water service the city provides. Uh total project cost, all in, again, twenty percent contingency and fifteen percent for engineering and legal admin is a little over two point seventy million, is what we're estimating at this time. Uh a couple of project location maps, kind of giving you an idea of curb and gutter, driveways, really high level, not a lot of detail on these. Our supporting documentation is an appendix B for the probable cost opinions that we prepared. Uh appendix C is a technical memorandum that our environmental staff prepared for the permitting requirements. And that is basically the report. I think Angela wanted me to address, you know, there's some questions about if the city is required to install sewer or water or being paid. I took a look at your local improvement policy, specifically under, um ninety-two point four zero where it starts. Anytime it talks about sewer, specifically installation of sewer prior to paving a road, it just talks about making sure that there are adequate service lines to the property line before you pay the road. So that is under the assumption that the city already has a sewer main line. And the, this ordinance is basically referencing like, before you pave a road, make sure that you put services into every developmental lot that is available for potential sewer connection in the future. And I'm assuming that's in there just because you don't want to go in and tear up a brand new street that you just paved for someone that wants to connect to the city sewer. We did look just briefly into your comprehensive plan, just to try to flesh out that discussion point about is the city required to extend sewer or utilities to a neighborhood? I believe I touched on that. So, yeah, right here. According to local improvement policy enhancements to Eaton Avenue Northeast and, uh, like the drive up qualifies as a class C improvement. Those improvements are per primarily exclusively the benefit to the adjacent properties. This is basically a dead end road, extending sewer and water and street would just be to the benefit of those properties in that area. The city has raised questions regarding the necessity of extending municipal infrastructure to this area. While city code does not mandate, public utilities get extended to this area without a valid petition that people agree to be assessed for the cost of those utilities. Uh comprehensive plan provides relevant guidance to projects of that nature, including, um, this statement in the quarter section of the comprehensive plan. A limited number of residential units in the city are serviced by ISTS, individual septic systems. If the city has no immediate plans to extend municipal sewer mains to this area or is not financially feasible, these extensions are made. Minnesota rules seventy-eight of government construction and abandonment of ISTS. So it's basically saying that if it's not financially feasible, um the city does not necessarily have to extend sewer to areas that it doesn't make sense to. Under the infrastructure section of the comprehensive plan, again, it gets at that point of expand city sewer and water to areas of the city where appropriate. So it kind of gets at, you're not mandated to do anything if it's not financially feasible or if the council doesn't think it's a good idea. We're just here to give you the costs and the relevant information, so you guys can make your decision on if it's appropriate or not. And then the code basically just says, make sure you extend services off your main line prior to paving your road, so that you don't run into problems in the future.
So petition or request is where you go. So our, what's our assessment policy for that type of development?
Yeah, so.
What are they gonna take?
Yeah, so, um, under, I have a copy of your assessment policy here. I didn't run through the calculations, that's certainly something I can do, but anytime you have a new street or a new curb and gutter, um the assessment policy is put pretty clear. Seventy-five percent of the costs are assessed to the property owner and twenty-five percent of the city cost. Storm sewer, new, um private property, forty-two, twenty-five percent, and the city at seventy-five percent. So that is for the streets, you're looking at a seventy-five, twenty-five on physical infrastructure end for the underground stuff, it would be opposite, twenty-five, seventy-five. The way I, I read your policy, Angela might correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I, what I came up with, so. High level, I could run through the numbers real quick and try to figure that out, but the assessments would be relatively high. What you're running into problems with in this area is your lots are very big. And so you don't have a lot of users on the street, so those assessments are gonna be much greater because you don't have the, you have the front footage, right? But the lots and the common holders is very low. And so those assessments are going to be pretty substantial for a single family residential lot, just for a street improvement. When you get into sewer and water, those are obviously gonna be much more, I think, new water mains, seventy-thirty, so seventy to the private side and thirty to the public. And then, um, sanitary sewer. Does it really? Did it add in here, Angela?
It should. You go on to the next page.
We start off. Sewer, water, sewer line, oh, hundred zero for new sewer. Water service line, but it doesn't really address. Okay, so water sewer, why the term is that, it's actually under the, so water and sewer main lines are seventy and thirty. The service lines from the main line to the property are a hundred percent paid for by the owner. So again, those assessments would be fairly substantial in my estimation. I could do some quick math when I get back to the office tomorrow and figure that out for you guys, kind of a high level per lot analysis, but I have a sneaking suspicion they're gonna be for a time.
So if they do decide to go through this process and have everything taken care of, what would their timeframe be? Would this be a one year, two year project?
Um, you know, if we were, if we were authorized to move forward, um, say, June or July, we'd be able to get it done for twenty twenty-six construction. So I mean, it's kind of a, I would say a six monthly time for design, assessment, front end assessment proceedings, like your hearing and that kind of stuff. That need to happen, um, we're pretty confident we can turn around the design and we get it ready for you guys in a six month time, one to be bidding in December. If we're kind of set in this middle of the year.
I mean, miserable road to get in on a spring construction.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, especially if you're in that reconstructing category where you're grading and changing grades substantially, you're gonna it's gonna be difficult to access or maintain access for construction operators. That's high level what we prepared for you all, a lot to digest. But if you have questions between now and whatever, simply you can reach out to Angela and she can forward it on the meeting and I can.
Yeah.
So in the process, like I, I don't live out there, so I don't wanna speak for anyone who lives out there, because, um, but what would the next step be? Because we would obviously need to, is the next step a public hearing then? Because we would need to hear from everyone out there. It was petition to us to do this feasibility study, and that's our job to follow through on that part of it. However, I don't, and I shouldn't speak for them, but I don't know that the petition part of it, I don't know that they were thinking these kinds of numbers, honestly. I mean, they're big numbers, so.
They definitely are.
Um, I don't, I don't want it out there that, oh, we're moving forward with it, because we absolutely are not. I mean, you know, but that's how things go. So I just wanna make it really clear that we are, there's many steps before we will even entertain the idea of going through this. So our next step would be a public hearing then, or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, um, you know, it'd be good to hear feedback and get these numbers out to there in front of people and maybe some high level discussions around what your lot could be assessed, because that is of course what's gonna hit their pocket real quick right here. You know, and given that this is kind of a concept level, you know, during the assessment process, you have the full feasibility report that has to get repaired or prepared. And there's, usually that comes with like a thirty to fifty percent design is what we could, we'd like to do. You know, these costs that we have in here are conservative, if you don't get me wrong, there's so many unknowns at this point in the project, we're doing this from a desktop. We don't have topography, we don't have delineations for wetlands, we don't know jurisdictional water bodies, or who would consider ownership over. water bodies, or who would consider ownership over what, and we don't know where the stormwater pond is gonna be located, we don't know how storm sewers are gonna get, it's either high-level in the cloud kind of numbers that we're dealing with right now, and so, um, you know, if there's, you know, once we have this, you know, uh, public meeting, if there is a strong interest in at least moving forward into the first stage of the project, which would be like a preliminary design, getting some of these geotechnical stuff done and the wetland radiation and getting a thirty percent design, preparing the feasibility report that has actually, you know, more defined numbers as the design basis to it, that we know we need this much storm sewer, we need this much sewer and water, that kind of stuff. Um, then that is certainly, I think, what would be the next step, but that, what you guys said makes the most sense is get this in front of the public, let them know that this is, these numbers are, you know, um, likely on a conservative side, um, because there are a lot of unknowns right now. Um, but, you know, with these conservative numbers here is potentially what you're looking at for a cost on an assessment, um, to do your street. And so, um, then hear what they have to say, and if everyone kind of says, heck no, I don't wanna pay that much, then you're kind of, um, off the hook from the city standpoint, but if there is some general interest, then, you know, maybe you take it to the next step and get that feasibility report and thirty to fifty percent design done, so you can actually start homing in on some numbers.
I don't know about the rest of the council, but I just feel like I would like to entertain the idea of having, uh, gathering this information sent out to them, cause the last thing we need is getting, getting, getting done with this meeting and, and on any social media platform, we're assessing everyone a hundred thousand dollars. I don't wanna deal with that, so I just feel like we need to stay ahead of this so that everyone's on the same page, and maybe Angela, if we could maybe get a date where we could just.
Or people can just submit written comments or whatever, you know, maybe it's not a formal public open house, maybe it's just.
Okay, yeah.
You know, city's giving you this report to review, you know, here's some potential assessment costs, please submit written feedback by two months.
Okay, and that's kind of it.
I mean, unless you wanna have one.
No, I don't think we need to do that, I just wanna be very clear.
Yeah, exactly, if the city's not moving forward with anything, this is done to get a good idea of what the costs are and.
Okay, and maybe that would, I think that suggestion would be really great, to get this information in front of all of them that live out there, and then they can be the deciders of this also.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
I don't know what the park item that's next is that.
Yeah, but.
Yes.
You might have some info to that.
Yeah, I can certainly talk to others' questions.
So I guess, um, I'll just start off the park committee here, um, what we're looking for is approval from the council to move forward with, um, this feasibility or phase one design for Park Los Haga. And this would, there would be a fee of cost to design the phase one, which we have laid out in there to be the shelter, the map in the back shows, the shelter, payment around there, and this walkway around it, that would be the phase one cost. We're looking to the phase two, what we're applying for the grant for with the DNR. Um, and I did list out there what those two included, the first one being phase one restroom, kitchenette space, water sewer, including pavement, shelter, walkway, and, um, the overlook area. Um, phase two was the DNR one, the winded, dented, uh, shelters, earthwork, as we can see, the splash pad, um, decorative concrete, splash pad, water and sewer lines between this pavement and parking, uh, area. So I think, um, if you have questions, Paul's here to just answer anything, um, kind of moving forward with that.
Yeah, and I can kind of go through our scope of services, do you guys have a good understanding? Um, just forwarding, I did not put this scope together, this was, uh, someone from our landscape architecture group, Jordan, who's been working really closely with the parks committee, um, through the master planning in Park Los Haga, and then furthermore applying for grants and trying to find you guys money to help move the project. So under the scope of services section, uh, project management, that's just general, uh, project invoicing, um, product review, timelines, that kind of stuff, schedule, budget. Um, this phase two is a little bit different, um, so design development, um, when you get to phase or task three, that's our final design, but in order to understand all of the stormwater drainage and the whole park through phase one, through phase two, and phase three, we need to get a certain level of design done on the front end of all those improvements, and that's what this first task is, that design development, where we're looking at the whole park master plan and making sure we're not kind of backing ourselves into a corner with designing phase one and just looking at the phase one area and not looking at the overall picture of the park, right? And so that phase one or number two design development is really a thirty percent design of the entire master plan, to make sure that when we're setting the building height and the sidewalks and everything, that everything that may be constructed there in the future pursuant to master plan fits, um, and drains and works well together. So that's that, that second task there, what we consider design development. Number three is your standard final design, right? And that is just like Angela said, for that area that's shown in the red box, it's your building, it's the sidewalks directly around the building, and it's the walkway to, um, the overlook. And so that's preparing final plans for bidding, uh, your specification, preparing cost estimates, um, and attending meetings, either the city council or the parks commission, and doing any permitting that's necessary to finish up the project. Uh, we do have a bidding task in there, um, that's just the bidding administration side, where we're soliciting contractors, receiving bids, doing a public bid opening, and coming to the council, using tool or that contract. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of what that design development phase was, it's really looking at the whole part of the whole design, just one element of it.
I just had to deal with the shoreline ordinance before, and there's some discussion about clear cutting that hill, I've never seen anything in the paint ordinance, so how is that, has that been discussed with, with the DNR or?
I have not heard of any discussions, I have heard of.
Amber's been working on it with the DNR to get things cleared out, and I'd want to say they were looking more, was it fall, winter, to kind of clear some of that out, where they didn't have to worry about erosion.
Yeah, I know if you get, if you get permission to do it, it's not a winter thing.
Because of northern longer bats, more than anything, you're supposed to, yeah, you're supposed to clear trees during the winter months, because that's their non-roosting habit, and so, um.
It was surprising, because I, I lived on the lake and it's usually pretty restricted, so, once you guys have taken care of that issue.
I think one of the things around that they stated was not to remove anything on the ground, so like if you cut off some trees, but not take out the roots or.
Yeah, leave the roots for roam protection.
Yeah, that, so then they put out some natural vegetation that you put in there and plant, and then it's that.
Okay.
Glad you did.
So I make a motion to approve phase one for the Park Los Haga.
Congratulations.
Motion is being seconded to approve WSP proposal for phase one final design, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Unless you guys want to say? No. Now's a good time to go.
Did I go for me too?
Yeah.
Let's take fifty seconds.
Thank you again for the questions.
Water is open for anybody who would like to bring anything before the council to consider for future meetings.
Can I just make a general comment?
Certainly.
Two things.
Oh.
Oh, I'm Paul Hart.
Thank you, thank you.
Two things, one, when it comes to the beams addition, obviously they're not gonna go for that type of assessment. I think you guys should look into, uh, uh, recycled asphalt and put a three to six inch base in there. Um, I've used recycled asphalt, I've used recycled concrete, I've done concrete over water and, and, and didn't remove vegetation, I just put six inches over it, pack it, and it's some of the best, uh, driveways I've ever put in. If you pack it well with a, with a roller, uh, you'll have a good solid base there with minimal maintenance. Now, second one, if you try to touch any of those trees in the park, uh, I'm gonna be pissed off. You know, Lake Los Haga's, uh, you know, the only thing that helps lakes are trees. You know, when it comes down to erosion control, the trees, the leaves on the trees dissipates the rainfall, and it produces a protective canopy. Trees cool the water for fish, and, you know, I don't, just because there's free money at the Sard Sam's, doesn't mean that you have to go and try to grab it and waste it. You know, there's nothing wrong with a park, you know, a park is supposed to be trees. I don't sell.
Can I show you this?
I've already seen it.
Okay, I was gonna say, cause they actually have proposed trees, or dark ones that they exist in trees.
Twenty-one, twenty-two trees will be removed inside the park. And then you're just, and then you're just talking about clear cutting, the embankment? I mean, that's the most abstract thing I've ever heard in my life. It's, it's stupid, from environmentally, it's stupid. And if you guys have, care about this lake whatsoever, you should be doing that, that's irresponsible, in my opinion, so.
Some of the trees that are coming down are already dead.
That's fine, you can, you can, you can remove, you can remove dead trees.
Yeah, we have looked through there and have said, look, these need to go.
Right, dead trees, dead trees can get removed, cause they're, they're serving no purpose.
Yeah, we don't wanna take any more trees than we absolutely have to, but some of them are, yeah, they're on their way out.
Well, dead trees are a different story than live trees.
Yeah.
Because if a dead tree is offering no canopy, no protection, and that, that should be taken out, dead trees should be removed on a yearly basis, you know, it should be part of the maintenance. But I'm talking about just a, a blanket clear coating of, of the embankment? I mean.
So I, I don't think it's that. I know it's not.
Well, that's what you guys were talking about.
No, 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 it's, it's not gonna be.
Clear cutting the embankment.
There, no, that's not what they're going to do, they're, they're taking some of the stuff, there's so much brush and junk that has grown up over the years, cause nothing's been taken care of. So they're gonna take some stuff, especially near that overlook where that is planned, that's where we're gonna clear it out, so they can actually see the lake, because you really can't see the lake. So we'll have a couple of spots, but mainly is to clear off the brush, save some of the trees, of course, but not, no, we wouldn't take everything down to have a clear embankment, no.
Well, that's good, you know?
Yeah.
And I don't have to chain myself up.
You go for it.
I've been saving up all my log chains, I'm at about three hundred feet.
You go for it this week, Paul, you go for it.
Anyone else?
Joan Ate, um, I brought up a forensic audit before, um, I know April eighth, I believe it is, we gotta get out and vote for a school referendum, is there a way we can add to the ballot to, uh, vote for a forensic audit for our city? Let the people decide?
I don't know the answer to that, I would have to do some checking into that, or us as a council would have to check into that, um. You want me?
Um, I, I can at least chip in the fact on the ballot, it's there, so I went to the school one meeting before this meeting, and to my knowledge on the ballot, they're hoping to either have a yes or no, is really all that's gonna be on the ballot, and they are still, the goal is to have it on the eighth, but they still haven't been a hundred percent approved, to my knowledge, to have it.
I, I guess what I'm asking, to me, ask is to it, since we're already getting out to vote, I mean, that was shot down too, so, just like the forensic audit was, we're already out voting again, let's make use of people's time.
There's statutory requirements on how long ahead you have to put a election together, I'm not sure what the information is.
Maybe we get to it and we can get back to you?
I appreciate it.
Perfect. Would you mind just touching base with one of us for a phone number?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think Shirley Stern, my head here in Los Angeles, decided that the sportsmen's won't tell, and we have a problem with speeders.
Uh, we have you coming up on our, on our agenda.
All right.
Four more, I'm like.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, no, that's no problem. Yes, ma'am.
There's a quick question, can Tom just say it out? I actually like live over on Lake Laven Drive, and I just want to know the next step in the process, I just wanna make sure that, um, just because people speak loud, that it moves forward, where people who like sit back and just kinda wanna be, just wanna make sure, like, if, if there's really loud people say yes, and if no people are quieter, that would move forward without, you know, I just don't know, I just wanna make sure, like.
I think what they decided to do, we're gonna send out a letter to everybody with an estimation of what it would cost to, and then get feedback from them. So if the majority of them have feedback from the council, then we'll have to discuss if they feel like they want to move the next step, as Paul said.
Okay, so then if like five people say yes, and only one of them says no, then it's?
More likely, they would not do it. There's nothing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the next step was information to you, you, or to the residents out there, and then feedback from that, and I, I, do you think we might end up with some type of public meeting for them?
I.
Council?
Yeah, I would say after. So make sure when you get that, um, when we send that out to you, encourage all of your neighbors, no matter how they feel about it, it's important for them to.
Yes.
Fill out the paperwork and give us some feedback, so we know, we have a consensus of how everyone feels about it. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Then we will move on with the agenda, the safest beautification team.
Um, I spoke with Amber, she was not able to attend tonight, um, she basically just said they are working on the heat handy for February twenty-second.
Okay, nothing further there, we'll move on to the community center. I don't think Al is here. Um, I know the back room has been completed, um, they have not received final bills for the project, um, Mr. Newman discussed having cabinets for group items to be kept in the back room to include janitor items. Um, I was there and I did see it, they did a really nice job back there. Um, he also mentioned to me too, we have some old tables and chairs, um, they're the old metal folding chairs, but he was wondering if, well, we wanted to look at selling them, or if we could find a place in the city to store them for rental purposes? So that may be something we have to look at here in the next few months.
He did not make it, he told me he had a work trip and moved to Texas, and because of the weather here, he was not able to make it back, so wait to discuss.
weather here, he was not able to make it back, so we have to discuss.
All right, then we move forward to the speed, uh Shirley?
I'm always just wondering if we can do something about the speeding, because it's really bad going out of town here. So like if you're coming from like twenty-seven or you're not moving to stop sign by the liquor store and reacting to that, there's a forty mile an hour zone, and then about five hundred feet later, it's, it gets down to thirty. Is there any way that maybe that we can take that forty mile an hour zone speed sign down and put in the thirty? I mean, we gotta do something about this speeding, I mean, with me living over at the Sportsman's, I mean, I'm outside a lot because I'm a smoker, so, and plus I work over at Dollar General. I have seen cars driving by there at least fifty, fifty-five miles an hour. And when we had all that fog a couple of weeks ago and that, I seen a car going sixty miles an hour past there, there's no headlights on. And it, it's, what I'm afraid of is because there's a lot of young kids that walk to Dollar General like in the, in the summertime, where else they're on roller blades or whatever. I'm afraid soon it's gonna get, get killed.
Well, I know, um, I spoke with Mr. Golderson, or Chief Golderson, um, to start. We are going to, um, you wanna address Chad?
Sure, um, I spoke with Public Works in Douglas County, and uh I'm just gonna get a little map of where all our speed changes are, where we'd like to have our, one of our two solar powered speed signs, and we're gonna get that down there for now. I did ask him about lowering the speed limit, and the council would have to petition the county to, to do that, and then the county, if they wanna move forward with it, would request MinDOT would have to do a speed study and analysis, and he said you'd be looking at probably a year, year and a half before you'd see anything, and uh he said unless it's residential on both sides, you really didn't see where they would want it, they would recommend changing it, and sometimes you've seen it's the opposite effect, where they might say, you know, actually, we might raise it. So, so he is going to put in on all the county roads, and then I'm gonna, the city can do the city ones, and then I'll get ahold of uh MinDOT too, and they're just, for our solar sign that we can move around. We're gonna get uh posts put in as soon as we can, just so it make it easiest, easier for us to do that, and one of them's gonna be right there at the forty sign. So we'll have that set up and.
I mean, I know I've seen Chad parked over there where I live at, a lot of times, he parks there mornings and afternoons. And I know I have seen one other squad car parked there at evening last week. But with Chad's pickup being parked there, of course, nobody's gonna speed because it says please, um, we're on the whole truck. So, but yeah, it's, I, I'm a parent myself, I have four children, I mean, they're all grown, moved away and that. I'm just a concerned parent about other people's kids. I'm just afraid somebody's gonna come, one of the kids, I mean, Graham, they do look both ways in that. But for the way some of these cars go by, I'm afraid that they're not gonna be able to stop and hurry, and somebody's gonna get hit.
Well, like I say, we'll let Chad set these electronic, um, speed signs for right now. A lot of time that's deterring to people. Um, and let's see what, what that does, because Chad, I think he mentioned too, that we can pull data from them?
Yep.
So that we can maybe put it up, look at the data, see what's happening, and and take it from there.
Is that one of them ones that flash like?
Yeah.
I got it on the one by the school.
So we, we will see what we can do.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Sure.
Mr. Bridger?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh Jeff Burton, West Central Sanitation, Don Williamson, the oldest West Central Sanitation, the Moses Park thing, uh King Street, Graham's tent, for those of you.
No way.
About ten minutes left in the second, next call, the second quarter. Congratulations, congratulations, uh, to the council, uh, election, reelection, uh, certainly we have a court that's working with you. Uh, we're here tonight because um our contract's coming up the end of March. Uh, we've had a nice long-term relationship with you, we're here to ask for you to do what you've done in the past, create a subcommittee to allow us uh to discuss more specific what our intentions are to extend the contract, that's what we've done in the past. We really uh don't want to, you know, give numbers or anything without it being the formal process, because then we short cards ahead of time. I think service has been great, uh, Tom McCorrath is one of our drivers, lives in town, uh, he certainly watches uh, uh, things, mostly for us, and Don and I, and Taylor, his son, uh, who's with the company, we certainly have done a lot of time building the city plays. You know, the last thing you want is disruption uh with the service, and we've had great service, we've raised, uh, we raised only three percent in the last seven years. I don't think you have a vendor that you're currently working with that that's the case, so we certainly, uh, we're here basically to ask uh for the, for you to create a subcommittee like you've done in the past, to negotiate some, uh, an extension on our current contract. And if there's any questions, Don and I certainly can answer, did I miss anything?
Yeah, we'll find out.
I'm working shirt over.
No, we'll find out.
What would we like to move forward and create a subcommittee and schedule a meeting with West Central Sanitation?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion made and seconded to uh put together a subcommittee to meet with West Central Sanitation. As soon as I get that set up, Jeff, I will um give you a call, oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, and once I get that set up, we will get ahold of you and get that set up for a meeting.
Thank you. We're gonna join the scouts on the wheel.
School.
Now, getting the update.
Planning and zoning, draft cannabis ordinance. The planning and zoning held discussions on the cannabis ordinance. Planning and zoning will be holding a public meeting regarding the proposed cannabis ordinance on January sixteenth at seven PM at the Ed Pollard Beauty Center.
This is online, I did um call from Facebook today too, so yeah, anybody that's interested, we'll try.
The EDA. Ask for sale of a lot on five oh five Eighth Avenue West. Is, will be for sale to build on, asking for us thirty thousand dollars. Is, um, the lot does have sewer and water stumped in, the lot currently has Eighth Avenue park advertised selling of the lot will be in the paper on the city website and Facebook. EDA is asking for offers by the next meeting on January twenty-seventh at five thirty PM.
The only thing I saw is in your minutes. Um, it's the roll call, and then it's motion my back is been seconded by Thornblom. Were you there?
No. No, I don't remember.
I don't even know how that happened.
I was reading that, like, ooh, look at him being all on top of things.
Oh, I really am.
That was the only thing I saw, other than everything else looked beautiful.
That will be at the EDA meeting, so if, if any individual has concerns about that, they sure can come to that meeting, EDA.
Yep.
Let's do that on a Thursday, um, on that Monday. The twenty-seventh, so.
Perfect, with all of that, and then you're just changing Thornblom's last name in the minutes, I will approve the EDA minutes from December sixteenth.
I have, I have motion made and seconded to approve EDA minutes from December sixteenth, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minnesota Housing twenty-five, twenty-five Minnesota City Participation Program. Um, if we are going to, um, continue, or, we are currently involved in that, right? Yeah, if we're gonna continue with that for this, to apply for this year. And we have to do that soon, don't we, Angela?
Yeah, I have two days to, he asked, read something, I said, as soon as the council approves it, I have it already to send over to him, but. Yeah, and it's, I can talk a lot briefly too, if you'd like.
Yeah, be fine.
Um, just the housing program is something the state wants to, we've participated the last three years. Um, they, they designate money to each city, and it's for buy town assistance or, or loan assistance or first-time home buyers or low incomes, there's different programs that they offer within that. I do share them on Facebook and that, but it's actually through the state, if somebody's interested, they go to the lender, and then they are the ones that show, kind of check if they qualify, and that's how they get the loan, so we don't actually do anything in-house, we're just promoting it as part of our program, and as long as somebody in our community uses it, the money that we have designated, then the next year they allow us to be in the program, but if we don't, then they're saying that we have to wait a year. So we've been lucky enough that we have ten people use it, so I think it's a good program with minimal cost or work on our, for people to use.
Motion approved.
Seconded. Motion is made and seconded to approve city of Los Angeles participation in the MCTP program for twenty twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Um, yeah, resolution here to accept donations, um, authorization of city of Los Angeles to accept donations, uh, listed.
I have a motion to approve the donations for the first responders and the beautification team.
I have a motion made and seconded to accept resolution twenty twenty-five oh one to approve donations to the first city of Los Angeles for the purpose of the first responders and beautification team. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Personnel policy. I did some light reading this weekend.
It's light, huh?
This is your turn.
I put a little marks in there.
I'm just wondering with new council, is it something, could we possibly table this for a workshop later this month? To just hash out things between ourselves and make sure we're kinda all on the same page, and then hopefully have everything ready to go and approved by February? Otherwise, I think everything in here sounds great, I think there's just a few things to kinda go through, and rather than eat up tonight and we just have a workshop where we can kinda go through things a little bit.
That would be perfect with me, because, um, of course, you guys have seen this before, so I just, I've just done the one-way read-through. Um, I do have a couple of questions, and yes, rather than eating up our time tonight, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Perfect.
If the rest of the council is okay with that.
Do you wanna set in a point or a time now, or do we wanna look like towards the end of our meeting? Or do you want to have Angela possibly arrange a few times that would work?
Would you want the attorney to log in there? Or on Zoom or anything, or answer questions?
I don't know, I think a lot of it, for me, I think a lot of it is clarification for you guys, and I wanna touch base with you for a couple of things. Um, me personally, I don't think I need the attorney.
And I'm fine without it, because I know you have, you have done, at least one's involved with them, so I'm fine without it, if everybody else is.
Well, maybe we just stay in or, um, if, if we do need higher clarification or whatever, then uh another meeting about it.
You know, that's what we give it, real down.
Email something like that.
Yep.
Yes.
Some very clarification. Thank you, guys.
Do you wanna just send out some?
Perfectly, thank you.
Do you need a motion to table that?
I have a motion to table the personal policies for a workshop.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to table the, um, review of the policy to another meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
And then there's just a few things that I would like to bring before the council, um, I would like to know your feelings on live streaming the meetings. Council emails, um, Angela sent me up an email so I can keep all the city stuff separate. How do you guys feel about getting separate emails, so you don't get emails in your email? It was an easy task. And it's, you had, then you have everything separate.
I wanna check the one I got, enough.
We'll teach you to start checking the city ones. Um, like I say, to me, it's really convenient.
It keeps it all in one place.
Yes.
But then you have to check two places, or rechecking it, or
But if you got a little.
Or I communicate saying there's emails that you have to check.
I was gonna say.
But you don't.
Your little thing on your phone says you got an email.
Yeah.
So it, like I say, for me, it's really convenient, I, I, like I say, I don't know how you guys feel about it. If you don't wanna do it, that's fine, but for me, it was, it's wonderful. Also, I've been talking to Angela a little bit, and I want your input to, um, our city packets that we get. How do you people feel about them being posted on our website? Anything proprietary, of course, can't go on there, but that's fine, um, but let the, let the public know what we spent, who we spent it on, um, what some of these drafts look like that we have to look at. Of course, I went with this personnel po- policy on there, but I'll see what eighty pages of light reading.
Yes, and light reading too.
So I'd like to say, these are things I'm throwing out there, we just like everybody to kinda think about. Um, there is one thing, um, as you can tell, being out of school for fifty years, my parliamentary procedure ethics, I mean, I've, I've lost part of it, in fact, I've lost a lot of it. Um, so I have gone to the FFA, um, leaders to have a parliamentary procedure team at the high school, and they are willing to do a demo for me. And I would like to put it out there to anybody who would like to go to this demo with me to, um, to let me know. Uh, they've offered me the date to February sixth, I can either do it at seven fifteen in the morning or three thirty in the afternoon. Now, I understand all you people's work, um, so I know it, I know it's a difficult thing, but, um, if anybody's interested, if they could let me know within the next, you know, by the end of this week, so I can get back to them at the school about if it, if morning or afternoon. February sixth.
What?
Oh.
Friday.
It's Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
Seven fifteen or?
Three thirty. But like I say, I wanna go because I, I've lost part of it, and I, I wanna make sure that I do things correctly and don't have to depend on you guys to help me, so.
Did they tell you how long it would take?
I, I, right now, I'm thinking it's gonna take about a half an hour, forty-five minutes.
Okay.
And I can nail that gun with, it may have two.
Do you want to open that up to the, to like the other boards?
I'm, yes, I, I'll be at the EDA meeting on the twenty-seventh, so I'm gonna ask them to.
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't know if any of the other boards would want to, um, we have time this, on Thursday, so I can offer it to them there, too. But yeah, like I say, if, if, there's anybody interested in honing up or just learning about it, I think it'd be a good opportunity for us, we can have our school kids show us how to do it. So, um, we do not have to make decisions on any of this stuff tonight, I would love you guys to just. I would love you guys to just all think about this. The livestream thing, I really, I really would like to push a little bit for, or advocate for. I've been talking to a lot of the older people in town, like me, that really didn't want to come out at tonight, when it was wind below. But they would like to see what's going on in the city, and it'd be a good opportunity for them to be able to stay home, but still be involved. So, like I say, just some, some things that are just kind of running through my head, and I'd like your feedback on them, that'd be great. Gambling meeting, held month quarter. Normally, normally it falls on the third Monday?
The third Monday, yes. Although the third Monday, the first Monday.
And of course, this year, Martin Luther King Day is on the 20th. So... But the 17th of February is President's Day.
You know, I could just have a little bit of conversation about this.
So, at one of our meetings, it was suggested that between the council and the EDA, we kind of make a priority list. You kind of remember that, Randy? And, and that's what the gambling entities would like us to do. So, I think it would, and not that I don't want to have meetings, because they sure are fun. But I think we, it would be advantageous for us to do that priority list, because otherwise it feels like we sit there and we kind of say the same things. They want us to have a priority, priority list, which rightfully so. They want to know what our money is going for, what we, what our future goals are. So we kind of need to get together to make that happen before we meet with them again. I mean, it, a year ago, it sounded, not even a year ago, when we first started this, it sounded like a good idea, because tensions were high on a lot of things. Now that we're kind of navigating through this, and we need to make this priority list, well, I think that's what we need to do, even before we have another meeting, because otherwise we just sit there and talk about this stuff over and over.
Well, is it something that you guys would like to have your EDA meeting touch base? And then follow up with the council after that, and see if you guys were able to come up with priorities? And maybe we look more February for a meeting? Or second quarter, maybe?
Yeah, first quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys are...
And that would be fine too, because, you know, January and February, we're...
We're out.
We're out anyway. Now we're fine with us.
At least each group could kind of meet and, you know...
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
So maybe Angela, if you want to let the gambling entities know that we're skipping the first quarter meeting, so we can get our priority list together? Not that we're skipping it, we're just are meeting to get... Yeah.
We're just tabling it.
Yeah. There you go.
Border review. I know that we need to have one trained person in order to have the right to hold the border review, and I know you have that training.
Yeah.
It is my intention to do that training also. I know it's done online, correct? Yep. And if there's anyone else interested in doing that, that would be great. How long a period are you, I see you're trained until 2026.
But then that's when my term is not finished.
I know.
Yep.
Okay. Think you're running, yeah, right?
No comment. You miss us.
A couple years.
And that's due to League of...
Well, actually, it's through the state.
Well, that's right, I agree with that.
And it is a good, I mean, it's not very fun to go through, but it's maybe half an hour, 40 minutes. And it just gives you an idea of what the board does and the reasons for, so it is good to go even if you haven't done it. Or to do it online.
It is pretty easy.
Yeah.
Do they test you?
Yeah, but they present to you the answers, and you did.
And they're very thorough about providing all of the information.
Thanks. Electric officials training. I know Angela touched on this a couple of months ago, about any council member that has a debit to do it.
I look at the school, but I'm not able to go, because I work in the tax firm.
But I know that they have, it's basically a two-part series, or a two-part deal. They have, I didn't even look to see the online, how long is it online?
Well, it opens, um...
The 16th?
Yeah.
10th.
Yeah, February 10th, it opens the online portion, and then the meeting in-house is not till February 28th. So I had suggested in there to, like Steph, I know you have to, but if you can see the online thing.
Yeah.
Then they do meet Friday and Saturday, so if you can miss the Friday, it might be worthwhile to attend the Saturday.
Okay.
Because they don't start until 11, and then they have lunch, and the first session really doesn't start till 1 on Friday. And then you're just doing a few sessions.
The other thing I thought of was to check this, and see if there's another one, like even if it's in the cities, something like that. And I can go to that at a different time, that it's not...
Right after April.
Yes. After the 15th.
I'll look at it, see if we can do something that way. It is always helpful, I think Laura I know attended to it, and then for, but is there anything that I'm not with? It is helpful to kind of understand the basics, so there can be a lot of... You got me on the right foot?
Okay, you've got me on the list too, Randy.
I can put you on there.
Oh, yes.
But I will...
Yes. Wait, and I've been reading, I've been reading a lot about that, too. I'm learning, kind of looking at all kinds of... Is there anything else to be brought before this, the call?
How many motions are there?
Sorry, I have a motion made and seconded to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you're gonna get home for about half an hour.